This Norwood City Council meeting to order this evening. If everyone can please rise for a moment of reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Here.
Mrs. Royce?
Here.
Mrs. Bowing?
Here.
Mrs. Winterbauer?
Mr. Gertner?
Here.
Mr. Braden?
Here.
Thank you. We have six of the seven members present this evening. And on to amendments of the agenda. We have several. We are removing ordinance M2 and the replacement ordinance that you should have received via email will be M4. We are removing the DEI Advisory Board Committee Report Number One and Number Two. We are removing the Housing and Health Committee Report, which is Number Six. We are removing the minutes of previous meetings. And we are also removing the presentation from Chief McCabe on the Fire Department. That will be at the next meeting. Mrs. Bowing.
We amend the agenda as stated.
Motion to approve the agenda as stated. Mrs. Franzen?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowing?
Yes.
Mrs. Winterbauer?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. We will move on to requests to address council. And we have six of those this evening. The first is Wayne Allen Stanton III. If you can just state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
All right. My name is Wayne Allen Stanton III. My address is 1632 State Route 134. And I'm here tonight to address the three officers that violated my rights and their oath that they swore to uphold for Constitution too. And along with Chief Sumner, that violated my rights along with him and his sworn oath that he took also. But I want to clarify a few more things. I know I've been up here like four times. But also, in this traffic stop that they stopped me for, which was a legal traffic stop in the first place, they went straight into a criminal investigation on me and brung a dog for no probable cause. With the arresting officer Peyton C. Williams, badge number 225, having marijuana in his floorboard knowingly and calling a canine to come sniff my car, which makes no sense at all. Maybe if he had probable cause, exigent circumstance, any of the above, but just I reiterate it like quite a few times, and I kind of feel like I want you to hear it from the horse's mouth. So I took a couple clips from, because I have all three body cams. I have the car dash cam from my motion discovery. And actually, they wouldn't give me the backseat camera, which it was on. Someone turned it off, which it had to been Williams. Because he didn't put a seatbelt on me in the back, he deprived me of using the restroom after sitting 20 minutes at the station. And I know in the protocols and procedures, that is not what it's supposed to be. I can reiterate those two, but I kind of want to get into, I just want to play this little video so you can hear it. Hopefully, you can hear it. The reason I called for the dog was the way you were acting, you were smoking a cigarette. You get like this feeling in your stomach, like somebody might be lying. You know what I'm saying? It's hard to explain. But I would never violate somebody's rights. I hope you guys could hear that. Because I've done, he reiterated that too. And he called a dog off of them plain reasons. But also, he charged me eight months later down the line. He went down to Hamilton County and charged me again, two times for the same charge. So that's a double charge me on the same charge I was going to fight my case for anyway, which I got that dismissed the day that it got put out there because it was illegal. He didn't talk to prosecution. These guys are not following the protocols and procedures that you guys set out, not even the Constitution. So I did a complaint. I feel like I need to talk to some administrators about addressing these issues. And I've addressed them three other times, maybe three, maybe four. And I ain't heard not anything from any of you guys. So that means, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure you guys swore oath to be a councilman and a president and mayor. So I feel like you're, that's a dereliction of your sworn oath. Because I'm bringing these issues to you, and these are valid issues, and I have hard evidence that this is what it is. And not one of you want to come talk to me, you don't want to answer anything. I feel like, I don't know. I just feel like you guys just are shutting me down and you guys don't, until you have to answer. Maybe an 18 U.S.C., 1983, 241, 242 lawsuit, federal lawsuit, will make you answer. I don't know, but I don't want to take it there. I don't want to do all that. I want to talk to you and resolve these problems because I don't want these happening to the constituents out here. Yeah, it happened to me, and I have a past. And I feel like that's the reason why it did happen to me, and it is okay, but it's not okay because I'm still a human. I'm a child of God. Like, this is ridiculous. Like, it's been, what, since July, when I got all these charges dismissed and I came to speak to Moore's assistant? And he shut me down and threatened me to bring the charges back up and all these things? Like, it doesn't make no sense. Like, I just, but since I've been coming here, I think it was a good thing because I met Bishop Sonny James. And I feel like me and him is bringing a, I feel more confident in addressing you guys about the issues and that I feel like that need to be done or need to at least be acknowledged. Just one more thing before you kick me off. I think you guys have been really, I watched the last meeting, I wasn't here, but I think you guys were being real hard on Mr. Braden. Like, because I feel like he's bringing up real concerns that are for the constituents and for the town. I felt like you guys were going real hard for him, and I just would like to say that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next request to address council is April Loving Rourke.
Good evening. I just wanted to speak briefly on DEI. I admittedly don't know everything about the program, but I'd like to speak personally of a family member that I lost a while back, which is my grandfather. He was African-American in Cherokee. And he was not accepted by anyone, either side of the fence when joining the military. And racism was really, really at its highest back then. He was kicked out twice. But because he was resourceful, and I don't know how he did it, he became an attorney. His records were redacted, and it took the efforts of his pastor and many others to recognize him for his service. The reason I mention it is because if we deny our citizens, all citizens, the right to jobs, fair rights, equal rights, if we deny our citizens' rights to businesses, if we categorize based on race, religion, we're going backwards in what America stands for. So I only ask that you take a look more inside here versus all of this. Because you'll be surprised at the pretty wrapping that comes out from within. And we could further our production, our safety, less violence, and more growth, supporting each other than tearing each other apart. Thank you.
Our next request to address council is Sonny James. S-U-N-N-I James, not the bishop.
Hi, City Council. My name is Sonny James. I'd like to address things going on in Norwood that I've seen that aren't so inviting. One thing I'd like to address, excuse me, one thing I'd like to address is my school. There have been more threats than I can count. I didn't feel welcome, even though I wasn't in the midst of the school. My friends were there with the unshakable feeling that they wouldn't be okay. I didn't appreciate that people would come out to schools to scare children. I want to know what City Council can do to make things work better, more effectively. Another thing I would like to address, that I'm speaking on behalf of youth, people in Norwood. The fact that I'm coming out to speak about these issues I've seen, to me, I think there could be something done to these issues, for these issues, and for us. Nobody's perfect, so when I say what I'm about to, I'd like you to listen carefully. I've seen a great change in the way Norwood is handled, but there are still things that need to be changed. For starters, the leadership. There are certain leaders that, to me, seem fake. And by fake, I mean doing things for public opinion, making themselves seem like something they aren't. That's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you. The next request to address council is Pastor Leslie Jones.
Good evening. I am Pastor Leslie Jones, a local pastor in the city of Cincinnati. I'm also the organizing director for the AMIS Project. The AMIS Project has more than a 25-year history of working on social justice issues across Hamilton County. We're not just, we don't just work in the city of Cincinnati. We actually have expanded to be a statewide organization, and we are addressing issues across the state of Ohio. We have chapters in Dayton, Columbus, and starting a new chapter in Springfield. And so, we're here tonight supporting one of our congregational and clergy members. The way AMIS is structured is that clergy are involved, that there's a clergy roundtable, and then there is a lay leader base that we have. And so, Keep It Real Worldwide Ministries has a social justice ministry, and they participate in AMIS. And so, they called us to come out tonight in support of the positions and stances that they're taking to work. I was glad to hear you have a, I don't like to say the acronym, so I'm going to say the whole word, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I believe that it's very important that we say diversity, equity, and inclusion and not cut it off. Because there's that one word in the middle, equity. Equity is really the problem. It's not diversity, it's not inclusion. Most people are okay with us having diversity and having inclusion, but with equity, there seems to be a problem. So we came out tonight to support Bishop James and his ministry and our social justice team. One of the things that we're working on right now in AMIS is developing a community safety agenda for the entire county of Hamilton County. And what we hope is that the city of Norwood will certainly be, come, one of our co-governing partners as we set out in this agenda. And what we're finding is that people are not really telling us that they don't feel safe because of crime. I just want you all to sit with that for a minute. They're not telling us, I don't feel safe because of gunshots going off in my community. I don't feel safe because people are getting mugged or robbed. What they're telling us that they don't feel safe is because of the quality of life issues. Grocery stores closing, businesses closing, not enough affordable housing, not sure if my children will be able to go to school. Are they really safe if they go to school? And ultimately, the biggest elephant we have right now is, am I safe because of my skin color? Am I safe because of my gender or who I love? I lift that up to you because, as I look around this room, I know that diversity, equity, and inclusion is probably something that you all work on, you want to work on. There's some diversity, there's some inclusion here, but it could be more. I've lived in this area for over 36 years. I was a very young person when I first moved to this area. And one of the first things I did, there used to be a dollar show or $2 show in Surrey Square. I brought my son and my cousin over to a movie one evening. An African-American gentleman stopped me and told me to get back in my car. This was 1989. And he said to me, get back in your car and come back at another time because it's getting dark out here, and you need to not be in this area. I didn't know what he was talking about, didn't understand it. But I can say that I've had some experiences, but I think it's gotten better, and I think you've made a lot of progress. And now's not the time to roll back progress. Now's the time to forge ahead. And so, I hope that your Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee and team will work diligently and know that we are a resource to work with you. So I thank you for your time, and you all are very liberal with your time. City of Cincinnati gives you two minutes. Thank you.
All right. The next request to address council is Reverend Peterson Mingo.
Good evening. My name is Peterson Mingo. I'm the pastor of Christ Temple Full Gospel about the church. We have been in Norwood now for almost a year. We weren't forced to move to Norwood. We moved to Norwood because we feel we have something to give Norwood, and Norwood has something to give us. There are a lot of programs that we have, Rights for Passage, Youth Day Camp, Free Day Camps. And nothing would be even more greater than me just saying Free Day Camp, except we got some money from Norwood City Council to help out. I remember the Norwood of years ago. I grew up in Abendale. And I just want to compliment not only the council, but the neighborhood of Norwood for the way things have changed. As I said, we weren't forced to move to Norwood, we chose to move to Norwood. And we feel that our relationship with the city is going to indeed be a blessed relationship. I remember the 60s, the 70s, the 80s, the 90s. I was arrested in Norwood, and the treatment wasn't all that well. However, there has been a change. We were a little apprehensive when we moved to Norwood. Some of our members said, well, I don't know what we need to do by moving into a hellish situation. But we found out that this is not the Norwood of the 60s, the 70s, 80s, and the 90s. This is the new Norwood. This is a Norwood that welcomes us, that's gracious. You've just treated us so well, made us welcome, and we thank you for that. And so, as we move forward, we hope that the friendship and relationship that we build with this city will be an example in other neighborhoods. I applaud my cousins, I have about half of my family from Lincoln Heights. I applaud them for using restraint in the situation that they went through in the last It reminds me of years ago, but if I say those days are gone, this is a new day. It's a new Norwood. I feel safe coming to Norwood. I didn't feel safe coming to Norwood when I was a high school student. I didn't feel safe coming to Norwood when I got out of the Marine Corps. But I feel safe in Norwood now, and it could only get better. So I congratulate this council and others basically who basically come out and served, who represent the neighborhood of Norwood. We're here to stay. I believe, truly believe, I can get to heaven from Norwood.
Thank you. The last request to address council is Bishop Sonny James.
Well, let me first do a thing that I'm challenging each and every one of you to do, especially those of you who've never done it. I want to turn to those that have taken time out of their life. I just want to say hello to. I want to make sure that you understand that when you come into Norwood, you come into my town. When you come into Norwood, you come into a town where we haven't been perfect. But you come into a town where the history has been plagued with systemic racism so deeply embedded that I like to compare it to none other than Selma, Alabama, or Birmingham. Now, some of you may squint and say, well, Bishop, why do you always say that? Let me give you a few examples. We've made great strides, but you and I, all of us know it hasn't been easy. Ask the mayor and I, ask Mr. Bonzel and I, ask Mr. Braden and I, who literally found ourselves toe-to-toe, come across the street, partner. Let me show you what you're working with. But over time, by having a repentant heart, I'm talking about myself, Mr. Bonzel and I, we see each other and we say hello. The mayor and I, wow, I don't know if he beats me to the handshake or if I race to his hand now. We did a march in Norwood where most of Norwood did not show up because of the individual who's heading it. But as most of you know, I've gotten to the point now in Norwood, Law Director, that I don't ask for permission. I tell you what we're going to do, and we do it, and we have not had one incident for the record. Mr. Braden and I, even coming in tonight, I applauded him before my peers. Because as we were talking, a few other council folks walked right past us without so much as acknowledging anybody that was clearly in front of them. I've been in meetings where I've been told, oh, the time is short. And I raised my hand to compliment those that were running the meeting, to be told, sorry, your time's up. To have other counterparts stand up after the fact and be allowed to continue to talk on. It seems like we've made great strides, and each of you know that I've been pivotal and on the forefront and the front of that push. And we've made great strides, brothers and sisters. We've made great strides. But as one leader said, you know, my concern is the rollback. So, looking at the bishop clock here, in two weeks, we're going to set a table where all of you are invited and will be invited, and not just Norwood municipalities, but other mayors, other council folks. That we're no longer going to just have residents saying, I'm trying to get a word in, and nobody's going to listen. No, we're going to set the table, we're even going to put chairs in there for you. But we expect you to fill the seats so that you can hear the heart of the people that love this great community so we can keep it moving forward. Everybody in here can say, Norwood today is not Norwood of old. And as you all know, as this committee moves forward, I am the biggest cheerleader Norwood will ever have. I want every community around the country, as we bring these young folks, don't look at the clock, as we bring these young folk forward, how are they going to trust that you've got their best interest if you turn their mentor, their hero, down and don't even say hello? So tonight, I expect you, find somebody you don't know, and just say hi to them. Show them that you really care about. And when my 13-year-old daughter surfaces, don't ever make her feel unwanted or unvalued. That's when we get a little angry. God bless you all. I think the clock is broke, it just don't work. You all be blessed. If you have any questions, my phone number is 513-487-8843. And happy Black History Month. God bless you. We'll see you not this Sunday, but the following Sunday, and we're even going to feed you. The clock will move down. God bless you.
Thank you. Moving on the agenda, we have the reports of standing committees of council. And the first is the Infrastructure, Streets, Parks, Recreation, and Public Places from January 22.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the Honorable Council of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of Infrastructure, Streets, Parks, Recreation, and Public Places, to whom was referred plans for the PLK site south of Robertson Avenue, beg leave to submit the following report. Nick Linganfelter of PLK Properties gave a presentation and answered questions about their current plans for 48 townhomes in the currently vacant property located south of Robertson Avenue. Approximately 20 local residents attended, and a future similar event will be planned once PLK submits plans to the city to be examined. Respectfully submitted by Ms. Emily Franzen, chairperson, Ms. Alexis Royce, and Mrs. Candace Winterbauer.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowing.
A move that we accept the committee report.
Motion by Mrs. Bowing to accept the report. Ms. Royce?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowing?
Yes.
Mrs. Winterbauer?
Yes.
Mr. Gertner?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item, it is a Finance Budget Audit and Claims Report from January 28th, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the Honorable Council of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of Finance, Budget, Audit, and Claims, to whom was referred the State and City Finance Schedule, Report on Accounting Methods by our auditor, Mr. Miracle. The Tax Department, Mr. Bonzel, Mr. Wagers, reviewed the 2024 earnings tax totals and forecasts, along with the bank reconciliations from 2024. We also had Chief Sumner there to discuss the lease agreement for Police Cruisers. I beg to leave, beg to leave to submit the following report. City Auditor, Mr. Miracle, provided an updated auditor schedule for 2025 to help inform council of important dates throughout the year. The Report on Accounting Methods will be updated every month, identifying ownership and current status of each to-do item. Please see attached documents showing the 2024 Please see attached documents showing the 2024 earnings tax and forecasts. Chief Sumner reviewed the reasons for needing the lease agreement for the three cruisers due to unforeseen circumstances, along with the minutes. I did provide the tax department paperwork for our earnings tax, and there is a lot more attachments that I gave to the council. If anyone's interested, she has them. Thank you.
Thank you, and that was respectfully submitted.
By myself, Ms. Winterbauer, Mr. Gertin, and Mr. Braden.
Thank you. Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to receive and file the committee report.
Motion by Mr. Braden to accept the committee report. Mrs. Bowling.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mrs. Winterbauer?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item, that is a committee of the whole report dated February 4th, 2025. To the Honorable Council of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred master plan for the city, new council orientation, standard operating procedures, community survey distribution, and community survey early results and follow-up, beg leave to submit the following report. With regard to the community survey, early results, and follow-up, just over 600 surveys have been submitted so far. Members of council will reach out to those who have requested hearing from an elected official. That timeline is being finalized. With regard to the community survey distribution, we discussed, discussion took place regarding where and how to distribute surveys. New QR codes and flyers will be created for various groups, organizations, and locations. Regarding new council orientation, Mrs. Bowling will have additional information to present at the next committee of the whole meeting. With regard to standard operating procedures, this matter is tied to new council orientation and will be further developed. With regard to the master plan for the city, the community results, community survey results will provide more guidance on what areas to focus. All items placed in committee will remain in committee for further discussion and development, and you will notice there are minutes attached. Respectfully submitted, Joseph Gears, chairperson, Ms. Royce, Mrs. Franzen, Mrs. Hoover, Mrs. Bowling, and Mr. Gertin. Mrs. Bowling.
I move that we accept the committee report.
Motion by Mrs. Bowling to accept the committee report. Ms. Royce.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mrs. Winterbauer?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to introductory readings of ordinances and resolutions. The first is an ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Gertin.
I move that we have suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Gertin to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Mrs. Winterbauer.
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Winterbauer. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the ordinance.
Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Gertin.
Make a motion that we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Gertin to pass the ordinance. Mrs. Franzen.
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mrs. Winterbauer?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item, this is item number three, a resolution celebrating the month of February 2025 as Black History Month in the city of Norwood, Ohio. Ms. Royce.
I move we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Motion by Ms. Royce to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the resolution. Mrs. Bowling.
I would like to second with a small amendment. I think given the current silencing of celebrations of Black History Month, it would be appropriate to have the final be it resolved section read in its entirety once.
Ms. Royce?
I am fine to amend. My motion is stated.
All right. So the motion, amended motion on the floor by Ms. Royce, seconded by Mrs. Bowling, is to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the resolution with the be it resolved section read in its entirety. Any discussion? Mr. Braden.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and, you know, when there's no issues here, except for I haven't really found any place that is suppressing Black History Month. I don't really have seen anywhere that's suppressing that, so wherever that's coming from, I haven't seen that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Ms. Royce, seconded by Mrs. Bowling, is to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the resolution with the be it resolved section read in its entirety. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mrs. Winterbauer?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the resolution and the first time through with the be it resolved read in its entirety.
A resolution celebrating the month of February 2025 as Black History Month in the city of Norwood, Ohio. Be it resolved by the council of the city of Norwood, state of Ohio, that it acknowledges that all people in the city of Norwood are the recipients of the wealth of history provided by black culture, recognizes the importance of Black History Month as an opportunity to reflect on the complex history of the United States, including the city of Norwood, while remaining hopeful and confident about the path ahead, acknowledges the significance of Black History Month as an important opportunity to commemorate the tremendous contributions of African-Americans to the history of the United States, including the city of Norwood, encourages the celebration of Black History Month to provide a continuing opportunity for all people in the city of Norwood to learn from the past and understand the experiences that have shaped the United States, agrees that while the United States began as a divided country, the United States must honor the contribution of all pioneers in the United States who have helped to ensure the legacy of the great United States and move forward with purpose, united tirelessly as a nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, and declares February 2025 to be Black History Month in Norwood, Ohio, to encourage our residents to learn about black history.
Second.
Sorry.
Just a title.
A resolution celebrating the month of February 2025 as Black History Month in the city of Norwood, Ohio. A resolution celebrating the month of February 2025 as Black History Month in the city of Norwood, Ohio.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowling.
I move that we pass the ordinance, resolution.
Motion by Mrs. Bowling to pass the resolution. Mr. Braden.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Any discussion? Mrs. Bowling.
I'd just like to thank Mrs. Hoover. She is unfortunately under the weather tonight, and she was not able to be here for her work on ensuring that this was included this month, and I know that she's sad to be missing this.
Thank you. Motion on the floor by Mrs. Bowling, seconded by Mr. Braden, is to pass the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mrs. Winterbauer?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item, this is an ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into contracts to acquire public storm sewer easements as depicted and described on the plat of public storm sewer and storm water detention easements with the owners of 27 parcels of real property whose properties run along Maple Avenue, Ridgeway Avenue, and Woodlawn Avenue to enable the Elm Avenue flood elimination project and authorizing the city to record the plat within, with the Hamilton County Recorder's Office and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Franzen.
I move that we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Ms. Royce.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Mr. Braden.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Is there any problem with me sitting out this vote? Do you have enough to pass that on a three, on emergency clause tonight?
Mr. Moore, just confirmation, we would need to have six to suspend the rules and have all three readings.
That's correct.
So if you were to abstain, that would leave five.
Okay. I think I'll chance it.
Mrs. Franzen.
I just want to say thanks for Mr. Braden. I know it's frustrating because it's kind of a conflict of interest, not really, and I'm glad, I mean, I, I don't see the problem. I think this is a great thing for everyone, so I'm glad that we're here to, we're able to get it done tonight.
Appreciate it. I just don't want to, don't want anybody, you know, any type of way at all, you know. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor by Mrs. Franzen, seconded by Ms. Royce, is to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mrs. Winterbauer?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the ordinance.
Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into contracts to acquire public storm sewer easements as depicted and described on the plat of public storm sewer and storm water detention easements with the owners of 27 parcels of real property whose properties run along Maple Avenue, Ridgeway Avenue, and Woodlawn Avenue to enable the Elm Avenue flood elimination project and authorizing the city to record the plat with the Hamilton County Recorder's Office and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into contracts to acquire public storm sewer easements as depicted and described on the plat of public storm sewer and storm water detention easements with the owners of 27 parcels of real property whose properties run along Maple Avenue, Ridgeway Avenue, and Woodlawn Avenue to enable the Elm Avenue flood elimination project and authorizing the city to record the plat with the Hamilton County Recorder's Office and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into contracts to acquire public storm sewer easements as depicted and described on the plat of public storm sewer and storm water detention easements with the owners of 27 parcels of real property whose properties run along Maple Avenue, Ridgeway Avenue, and Woodlawn Avenue to enable the Elm Avenue flood elimination project and authorizing the city to record the plat with the Hamilton County Recorder's Office and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowling.
I move that we approve the ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Bowling to pass the ordinance. Mr. Gertin.
Seconded motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gertin. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mrs. Winterbauer?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to administration reports. Mayor Snyder?
Thank you.
Button.
That's a pet nickname, I guess. Anyways, I'll go through a couple of things here. The financial recovery plan we are working on, as everybody knows, the city of Norwood is still in a fiscal emergency. We're working on the financial recovery plan. It's about 75% completed. It hinges upon closing out the final year, right? You've got to have good numbers for the final year to put together and work through your historicals and all that. It also hinges to this year, and as it does every few years, upon some of the labor negotiations, the contract negotiations with our labor unions. We have four different labor unions, so working through those numbers to make sure we have good information to move forward with it. A big part of it is putting together that five-year plan, the five-year capital, some capital projects plan, and trying to put together all the street projects, and really not the specific streets as much as putting the funding in there so that as we, as we look at the street survey and as we look at what needs to be done in the different wards, we can get those streets completed. So that's a big part. It's a huge amount of work to get this plan put together. Then it has to go in front of our financial supervisor, which is a member of the, well, not really a member of the Financial Recovery Commission, but works as supervisor for him. So that's a big part of planning the future of the city of Norwood. The second part I'd like to talk about is, say, what's going on in the city of Norwood this year. The plans that I've heard, the whispers I've heard are pretty interesting because for years, years and years, I mean, as long as I can remember, the Norwood Day Parade was on a Tuesday evening. We canceled a council meeting. It was, I don't know if they did that just so they canceled the council, but they canceled a council meeting and have it on a Tuesday evening, and then the next day was always Norwood Day at Coney, at Old Coney, and that went on for 100 years. I mean, it's been that way for years. Well, we don't have that asset anymore down by the river to have the big picnic and have the Norwood Day party, so the celebration has changed to now is Saturday. So the Norwood Business and Professional Women's Organization has, has said, yes, we're going to hold it on Saturday. I think that's July 19th. So then they went and said, well, let's talk to the Chamber of Commerce, and the Chamber of Commerce that puts on the parade said, well, we don't have to keep the parade on a Tuesday because there's no reason to do that. Let's put it on a Friday, which makes it a lot more fun, if you ask me, for the city. So it looks like the parade will happen on July 18th, Friday, July 18th. Then Norwood Day will happen on Saturday, July 19th, and then there's some other, there are other plans, a lot of different plans that are going around. I'm working with Stephanie Downs, and we're going to work to try to put together like a Norwood Church reunion, try to get all the churches to have like a reunion, bring everybody back to their churches, and all the Norwood people go back to the churches on that Sunday. Monday, Tuesday night, hoping to have something in some of the parks, maybe in different wards. Wednesday night being a citywide open house, so we'll have a big parade of city vehicles go through the city, but it'll all be evening. So yeah, you can work that whole week, but it'll all be evening-type stuff. So if you, if your friends and family have never been to City Hall, it'd be the perfect time to walk through City Hall. We'll have the fire department, the chiefs, chief and I are working on a big demonstration of the ladder truck, maybe putting the ladder truck as high as it'll go, and having one of the firefighters climb up there with a watermelon and try to drop it to a target, just some fun stuff, some interesting things. So that whole week is not a week to take vaca, or might be a week to take vacation, but it's not a week to go out of town. That, that whole week of July, right after it, is, there's going to be a lot going on. Of course, the Holy Trinity Festival goes on that next weekend. They always have that, their festival on the 26th, 27th, 28th, something like that. So there are so many fun things to do in the city. You don't want to go anywhere that week of July, starting out with July 18th with the big, the big parade. That's a big part. I talked a little bit about streets and putting them in the budget and all that, and we have to go out to bid, so we just went out to bid. Finally, finally, just now, we went out to bid for Ralston, and the actual bids came in under, under the engineer's estimates. So we're, we're lower. We're, we're actually going to be able to enter into a contract that's, that's a good contract with the engineer's estimate. So that's, that's really good news. And then the last thing I'll talk about is the upcoming elections. And I see we've got one candidate that's, that has already put in his petitions and is sitting in the crowd, and I'll ask any of the other candidates to show up and come to the council meetings. They're, they're Tuesdays, and they're pretty regular. But I think a lot of people in the community don't realize the time and effort that these candidates have to put in, including the incumbents, including the people sitting here, that petitions have to be signed and taken care of in February, in February, for the elections. I mean, realistically, the big election's not until November, so everybody's like, why do you have to do it so early? Well, we've got the primary, right? There's a primary that comes up in May. But all that information, all the petitions, and all the people have to, who've been scratching their head saying, I want to run for city council. I think we can do some things differently. All those people have to make a decision early. All of these people had to make a decision early on what they're going to do and how, how, it takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of time from your family. It is time and treasure that you are giving to your community, but it's really worthwhile. I think any of you will, sitting here would say it's worthwhile, and you've learned a lot, and it's been a real growth experience. So I commend all the people sitting here and the people who've put their names out there right now to run through this next campaign season and hopefully secure a seat. And Noah and I will be holding, the administration will be holding a, a new board, or new council member orientation. Same thing we've done in, in years past to try to open up the doors and make sure that all the council members are, understand sort of what's going on. And, and so that's, I think they've been very successful in helping a new council get seated and get their feet on the ground and moving forward and being productive right away. So we'll continue to provide those things from the administrative standpoint. But there's so many good things going on. We, we heard a lot of people talking about all the good stuff that's going on in the city of Norwood. And we continue to strive. It is a continuous improvement process. And appreciate all the work that you guys are doing to, to keep us moving in the right direction. So that's all I had.
Thank you. Any questions for Mayor Snyder? All right. Mr. Bonzal.
Yep, I have no reports there.
Okay. Mr. Miracle is unable to attend this evening. Mr. Moore? All right. Questions? Okay. And we move on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Mrs. Winterbauer.
I think this would go under it. The Ivy Project that is supposed to happen, I think this Monday.
Yes, the Free the Trees?
Yeah, Saturday. Sorry. Thank you. The weather's not looking good again. So just for anyone who's signed up, we want to let you know that there might be an update on a reschedule for that. We want people to show up and not be extremely cold. So just a heads up for that one.
All right. Thank you. Anything else under unfinished business? Moving on to new business. Mrs. Bowling.
I've got two things. First of all, I wish that I was as prepared as Mrs. Hoover and had a PowerPoint presentation, but I am not. In honor of Black History Month, I just wanted to offer a few resources for folks who are wanting to celebrate and don't know where to begin. There is a phenomenal book that is available at the Cincinnati Public Library and both in physical print. They also have it on Libby in digital and in audio, if you are more of a listener, called The 1619 Project: A New Origin Story. It is by an author named Nicole Hannah-Jones. I'm about 40% of the way through it. It is very long. It is worth reading. It aims to reframe the country's history by placing the consequences of slavery and the contributions of black Americans at the center of our national narrative. It's got poetry. It's got nonfiction. It's got photos. It is a really wonderful resource and a great place for people to start if they just want to learn something this month. The National Underground Railroad Freedom Center also has the Emmett Till exhibit through April 6th, and I would encourage everyone to go see that. The other thing that I would like to touch on is, I would like to schedule a small business meeting. I know that Mrs. Hoover is not here. We will get with her on dates. But I would like to go ahead and get on the books to discuss food trucks again. Is there a time that works well for everyone? I can typically do anytime Mondays, Tuesdays before council, if Chambers is available, or weekdays.
I think Tuesday before council, next, next, the 25th will be the Finance Committee meeting.
Okay.
But for me at least, the 11th is fine. The, that would be the first council meeting in March, a Tuesday.
If there is a way to get it done sooner than that?
That would be great.
Before then? Does anyone have availability next week? I know it's President's Day.
Next week, next Tuesday?
I could do next Tuesday. I imagine everyone's available. We want to do 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock would be great.
Does that work for you, Mr. Gerton? Yes, sir. Beautiful. All right. We will go ahead and tentatively schedule that in Council of Chambers, given Mrs. Hoover's availability. Thank you.
Annie.
Thank you. Any, any other new business? All right. Then we will move on to communications. We have one, and that is from Mrs. Winterbauer regarding a resignation letter. Thank you. You can't choose to not receive and file this letter. Mrs. Bowling.
I reluctantly would like to move that we receive and file this letter.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen.
I also equally reluctantly second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mrs. Bowling.
I would just like to thank Mrs. Winterbauer, both for being an invaluable resource for those of us who are new to this term and for the incredible work that she has done on the Finance Committee. I think that so much progress has been made there that would not have happened without you. And you have been a massive asset to the city, and I'm excited to see what you do.
Thank you. Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to just extend my gratitude towards Mrs. Winterbauer and my regret to see you leave. It's been an honor and a pleasure to start with you. You're beautiful inside and out, and I think that you've done a great job, and I wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen.
I am frustrated, I am so sad that now someone else has to be at the head of Finance Committee. That is my biggest regret, but also that I'm almost seeing you. And I feel that your voice has been a valuable one on council and will continue to be a valuable one in the community. So I know I will probably see you tomorrow at some point. So it's not goodbye. It's just goodbye from here. Congrats on getting some of your Tuesdays back, though.
Thank you. Ms. Royce.
Council members first. I'll echo what everyone else has said, and I'm not going to talk long because I will cry, because that's how I am. But Candace Hoover's been a great person to work with, and I will miss you so much. And of course, I'll probably see you this weekend, but I've loved having you on council, and I wish you could stay, but good luck.
Thank you. Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I just want to say, you know, I think I could speak for the auditor and I, just for your work on Finance Committee, your attentiveness, your diligence, your passion and caring and wanting to dive in and dive deep. And so I know, I'm sure that Ken would say the same thing, but we definitely really appreciate that. In, you know, War II, the last, what, six years or so has had a really strong history of finance chairs. So hopefully somebody steps up after you, but definitely going to be big shoes to fill.
Thank you.
Say a little?
And I will add, as, as a former clerk of council, I do appreciate your candidness and your ability to, to speak to make a point as opposed to speak to hear your voice. It does shorten the minutes, I'm sure. Natalie appreciates that as well. As president of council, I do appreciate your, your leadership in the Finance Committee and your, your camaraderie with the rest of council. As the Chair of the Norwood Democratic Party, I do thank you for your, your ongoing teamwork in previous campaigns, your openness to new ideas and willingness to try things that are, you know, we have not tried in previous campaigns before. So I do thank you for that. Any other discussion? Mrs. Winterbauer.
I'll say my piece, my turn. I appreciate you all. Thank you so much. I've learned, I can't even like think about everything that I've learned since we started, just coming on. I remember being my first term. Luckily, we had some people that have been here around for a while that was able to lead the way. But the Finance Committee has been so fun. I'm sad to leave. I have not done anything other than just be supported and guided by Mr. Bonzal, the whole tax department, Mr. Wagers, Mr. Miracles, a miracle worker. But it's been so fun. And I have other responsibilities that have kind of come to my plate, so something has to go. But as you all know, community's number one. So I will still be out there supporting our community. You all know I love Norwood, so I'll be around and you know where to find me.
Thank you. Any, any further discussion? Mr. Moore?
Sure. Yeah, I would just echo everybody else. So you've been a fantastic council person. I will say this, there's three former chair, chairs of the Finance Committee sitting up here. I don't think one of us had a good time. So congratulations on that. Whatever you're doing, you were doing it right.
We have to treasure.
That's what made it, was the treasure in the other.
All right. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Bowling, seconded by Mrs. Franzen, is to receive and file the letter. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mrs. Winterbauer?